How many people order?
And you can donate online, put in the mobile line that it's for the OIF convention.
If we get enough orders, we'll get more pins. Don't worry.
Oh, well done, Bill. Two hundred and fifty is only the beginning, right?
Only the beginning, Rebecca. Only the beginning.
Can I jump in and say, Mark? Thank you for tuning in. Facebook, your daughter's cocktail hour. It was great seeing Dad. Now I know how to make some of those drinks.
I did not expect to see that, but Optimus International posted it, so I shared it, and I thought it was a very fun night last night.
I really enjoyed it, so thank you.
She's got some talent, Mark. We got some feedback.
She's actually making more money at her age than I was. But that's not her goal in life. And by the way, with COVID, she is not working currently. So, I mean, she's still doing her acting, but the bartending is on hold right now.
All right.
How did everybody's rubbing elbows go?
I had a great group of people, and I know a couple of them had, you know, I think bopped from, you know, one session to another to try and get into several, which would be a great idea and the kind of thing we could do in the hallway. But, um,
President-elect Mark did a great job.
Past President Danny did a fabulous job.
I hate wearing a jacket.
Can I ask a question?
Tracy was amazing. Thank you, Tracy.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
We've been over an hour trying to get into somewhere where we could hear people and see what's going on. Are we in a good place to start?
Yeah, you're hearing us now. You're perfect right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure what you were trying to get into an hour ago, but this topic is scheduled for this time, so you're in the right place for the town hall, if that's what you would like to be part of. Previously, you know, there were some other sessions, these rubbing elbows session and a federation session. And we also have, you know, some training sessions that were happening. So the good news is, you know, pretty much everything is being recorded. So even though we have things that are overlapping, you'll have the opportunity to go back into this platform and to take advantage of those things going forward. So that's one of the things we're very, very excited about. I hope that answers your question, Teresa.
Yeah, and if you were trying to get into one of those rubbing elbow sessions, they had to be pre-registered for some. That might have been the issue you were having.
Okay.
When we get out of here, we'll come back directly to the virtual convention and the next event will show up. And it might say scheduled when you get there, but you wait until it says play and then click on that and you'll be good to go.
President Adrian's on board.
Oh, good.
I'm gonna just interrupt at the moment. So we're going to mute everybody except for the board members. And what we're also going to do is so that it is easier to find the board members on your screen is we're gonna ask everybody to also turn your cameras off. What it'll do is it'll populate just the active cameras to the first screen as a result. You'll see things start to bump around. And then the mute, that'll help us find as the Zoom hosts, the right person who's talking, because then they'll all show up on top.
Well, she was gonna mute everybody.
I did.
And there's a lot of smiling picture faces. Stephanie, can you confirm that Sylvia is on and ready to go?
Adrian's still not up at the top?
Adrian was still in the Federation Hall. That was running over a little bit. Translator's probably still there, too.
There he is.
Welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. How are we doing? What's the time countdown?
We're, um, three thirty-four. And I think we're just trying to get everybody so that their video and their audio is off, Adrian, other than those who are speaking. And so Tracy, I think, I don't know if there's any further instruction you wanted to offer, but that's just what we were getting wrapped up.
Yep. And as long as we've got confirmation from Stephanie that Sylvia, the interpreter, is ready to go, then-
She is here and she is ready to go, Tracy.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I'll look to you, Mr. President. Ms. President.
All right. Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. And we want to welcome you to this town hall meeting hosted by the Board of Directors of Optimus International. It's been a very good conference so far, and as we deal with the business of the session, of the day, we thought it best to start with the town hall to answer some of the questions that are coming at us. I'm seeing a quick note in the chat saying the translation is not on. Can we get further confirmation that that's working, please?
The chat is on. It's at the bottom of the screen with the little globe. It says English and French interpretation available.
Okay, so I see Claire and Brett saying that. Okay, well. Thank you. We have. I did not get to all of the questions. Bring us back. The events myself, President Rebecca, but Lamona, Ed, and most of the questions. Let's support from Benny Ali.
Oh, no, what's wrong?
Well, we might need Rebecca if, um,
Yeah, I just lost Adrian.
Yeah, I think so. Let's, I still, we still want Adrian to lead the discussion, but if he drops off like this, maybe you can pick up. But I think we're worth waiting for him to come back right now.
Yep. Maybe as we're waiting for him to come back, I could just make a few comments to let people know that we are very appreciative that we received about forty-five questions in advance of the session today. So there was a lot of interest in some certain areas that the board was asked to address. And so what we tried to do, especially knowing that we only have about forty-five minutes together, is we went through those questions and many of them are actually logically grouped into topics or themes that we felt we could address collectively.
Questions in advance of the session today, so there was a lot of interest in-
Today, and to leave hopefully a few minutes at the end for any questions that might come up live. And we'll have those addressed predominantly by the four presidents here, but we'll also be inviting our other members of the Board of Directors to add any comments that they might like to add as well. And if there are any questions that we don't fully address for today, we will follow up individually with the people who asked those questions as well. Just we really do appreciate that the questions were asked and we want to make sure that everyone's questions are answered. Okay, so do want to share that with you. And, you know, it's a unique opportunity for us to have, you know, the chance to kind of solicit input and to have so many people able to be online with us. I think what we have here with us virtually is more people than we've had in any of the in-person town halls at the last several Optimus International conventions. So thank you for the interest that you've demonstrated in coming here today. And thank you also especially to those who took the time to provide some thoughtful questions to us in advance so that we could, you know, be prepared together to cover that with you. I'm just gonna pause and see.
There he is. He's back.
I apologize. I had a some odd network dropout. So thank you so much. So we get to the first question as we have some time that's gone. We're gonna start with what's topical, what's current, and this is COVID-19. So we had two questions coming from Sandy Wooton and Amy Rowe. And they basically asked, will COVID-19 change the way Optimus International pursue its mission in the future permanently? And Sandy wanted to know if there is any way that we can reach Trojan or our community in this new environment. Becky, I'm gonna send that to you so that you can give a hit at that question. Thank you.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. And thank you. I think we would all acknowledge these are certainly unprecedented times, but while they've presented many challenges to us, they've also given us the opportunity to do some things in some different ways that have actually turned out to be very, very positive. And we've been talking about this quite a bit through some of the coffee time and some of the informal chatting that's been going on throughout the convention. But I thought I'd just share a couple of highlights and then talk also about how we're working with some of our other service clubs. We have a chance here to evolve how we work as optimists to meet what are really changing needs for our communities. So some of that has been around changing how we actually meet. I think many of us have been meeting by Zoom, going back all the way to like March, which has given us a chance to continue that dialogue and even to have speakers join us. We've also been reimagining the type of service projects that we do in our communities. And sometimes that's been traditional projects we've done in the past, but we've got to figure out a way to do them in social distancing. And sometimes it's actually been addressing some new needs. So just to share a few examples of some things that I've seen. You know, we've seen clubs that have been delivering their youth appreciation awards, you know, in a parking lot, you know, socially distanced. Or they've been doing online contests. So like the new projects President Adrian introduced this year around poster contests and photography, they've done them entirely online. Online reading and book clubs to promote literacy, online exercise or cooking or nutrition to promote wellness, online programs to promote kindness and reduce cyber bullying. And a great example is how our Optimist Oratorical Contest has been reimagined online, even at the local level. And I heard a couple of great examples today from some of the districts who had promoted those video and had hundreds of people from the community participating far more than they ever have in the past in person. You know, we're also seeing new needs that have arisen, things like providing face masks for homeless individuals, for first responders and frontline workers. You know, clubs have long had respect for law programs and they've got new ways to recognize those first responders now. And really, you know, these challenges and these changes from COVID-19 are giving us a chance to kind of pause and say, you know, do, what do we need to change going forward? Are we still best meeting the needs of our community? And which of these things will be around for some time to come? Kind of like with nine eleven, you know, I do think some of these things are gonna be with us for a while, just like our airport security has been different ever since. At the international level, we're also reimagining things. This virtual convention is a great example, and we've had some wonderful feedback about how valuable it's been and how people can imagine that helping them going forward. We've also reimagined, as we said, the world oratorical. We've made changes to junior golf. These were all things for safety. But we've even done things like, with the help of a lot of great volunteers, had training on Zoom for our clubs and our members so that they could also learn how to do this going forward. We've also seen international expansion continuing during this time through social media and digital capabilities. Some of you may have seen, we welcomed new clubs in places like Nepal, which came entirely through digital capabilities. And we expect that kind of outreach and expansion to continue. And I'd just like to touch a little bit also on our work with other service clubs. And President Adrian talked about this a little bit yesterday, but building on some work we've done over the last couple of years with our service club leaders from the organizations that are very similar to us, especially with Rotary, Lions, and Kiwanis. There was a president summit that President Adrian attended in January of this year, and those leaders committed to come together and figure out ways we could be stronger together. They committed to an in-person meeting in April. And as it turned out, we did that by Zoom because everything changed. But the agreement there was we have several places we could share best practices. We talked about the impact of COVID-19 on each of our organizations and also, you know, what we wanted to do going forward. So we're planning to share in four main areas. One is around engagement of our clubs and members and how we involve them. Secondly is service projects, both locally, kind of in this new normal, but also local and global opportunities for us to collaborate together across our organizations to be even stronger. The third one is marketing, so that outreach beyond our own clubs and members to the broader community and the public at large, and fundraising. How do we reimagine when so much of what we do is based around events? What are some of the things we could do going forward and best practices for that? Like the digital fundraising workshop that was held here. And then the final area that's, you know, kind of an underpinning is technology. So sharing on things like virtual conventions and also on our learning management system platform. And I welcome your input on this. President Adrian asked, and the other service clubs as well, for me to take the lead on behalf of all of our organizations, working with their professional staffs to put together those best practices. And we're planning to reconvene in October in person. And I just want to say, while we are by far the smallest of those four, big four service clubs, we will play an equal partner role. We bring a lot of innovative ideas, and I really look forward to working with everyone for how we can improve our collective impact going forward in this post-pandemic.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, let's move quickly on to a matter that affected John Grover. He asks, will one of our primary objectives be on member retention over new members for the near term? Pat, do you want to take a stab at that?
I'll be happy to. Thank you, President Adrian. I think that this is a very important aspect of our organizations as retaining the members of which we have. I think that sometimes that we're struggling with our membership, we might simply have to ask ourselves, is our current structure in our meetings, are they inviting, are they inclusive? Are they relevant? Are they attractive to all members of all ages? Maybe some of the programs and projects that we're doing currently are a bit outdated. The old way may not be the best way, so to speak. Our meeting times, our meeting places, they might need to change, possibly replaced with happy hours, social gatherings, axe-throwing contests. Those are things that are really big here in Texas. But they're things that will help retain our members and provide a social gathering, so to speak. Retain our members, retaining our members might possibly mean we need to change the setup of how we look. Our bells, our banners, our gavels, our felt banners especially, may be replaced with pop-ups and rolling PowerPoints and club activities and awards to allow that type of flexibility in our club. But our history is very important. So, you know, it was interesting to see these comments on, you know, we don't want to get rid of our felt banners, but we want our membership to see our achievements. So possibly developing virtual banners on that as well. Our organization, on average, has retained about eighty-two percent. And I think this year it's sitting around eighty-five percent. Clubs we know will lose the few members to job relocations, retirements, life issues. But the biggest concern, I think, is that they lose, we lose them due to just, they've lost their passion. And I've lost their, they've lost their passion. I'm sorry. Retention is sometimes about finding something new on how to address our current membership, finding something valuable, finding something relevant and possibly new projects. There are a vast range of projects that are out there through Optimus International, and they were developed through our Activities Committee. They were approved by the Board of Directors, but keep in mind, those projects that we have came directly from you, the member. There's not too many places that we go and ten meetings that a club member doesn't step up and say, hey, I wrote that or I developed it, just like the pride of giving birth maybe to a new child. So possibly that is something that you need to look at as far as retaining your members and basically to say relevant, develop new projects.
Thank you so much, Patzy. Benny, I want to come to you next. We had a question from Yvette Reed, and Yvette wanted to know, when are we gonna go back to having voting for our president and board members than at the international convention? This year, we had four presidents, four candidates for our president. You want to take a stab at that, Benny?
It'd be my pleasure. The, that's a bylaw issue. On the floor, I believe in Cincinnati, the delegates voted to go to this online system. New technology. I know this year we had thirty-seven percent of the clubs vote in this election. For the first time, we had debates or a series of discussion panels with the candidates. Technology gives us, I think the reason of the vote or the approval in Cincinnati was that every club wanted to vote. Every club has the opportunity to vote if we go online. It keeps the cost down for clubs. Of course, we'd love to have them at convention, but this gives the right for every club to cast their vote online. We give them thirty days to vote, which is a very extended period. I know the four candidates for president actively campaigned this year and did a pretty good job of campaigning. And, you know, technology works. This is the largest convention, right at seventeen hundred delegates that we've had in about twenty years. So by technology, we can reach more clubs, more members, and do things in a better, more effective way. So the online voting is a bylaw. So if a club wished to change it, we have a unique system at Optimus International that a club can forward a bylaw to the board that can be voted on in an assembly. But it would take a convention vote in Atlanta to change this system. But I gotta say right now, this system is working. We have more clubs voting for officers than ever before. And like this convention, on virtual convention, largest in twenty years, technology works.
Thank you, Benny. Moving on to Mark. Mark is our president-designate, and Mark has one of the hard questions being thrown at him. Mark, we got a question from past international president, our first female president, Ronnie Dunn. She said, how does a board plan to deal with dysfunctional districts that no longer provide services to clubs? That's at you, Mark. I'm not touching that one.
Thank you. Well, I do want to say in all seriousness, the Board of Directors takes this issue very seriously. I want to start by referring everyone to a policy called ID25, which you can find on the Optimus International website, which has specific measurable things we can do to measure how districts are supporting their clubs. The Board of Directors has instituted a process where every year, staff analyzes all districts on these parameters and makes recommendations to the Board of Directors about districts that are at risk, districts that are doing well, and districts that are in between range. And we are taking steps to work with those, all districts, but especially the ones that are not doing as well supporting clubs, to make sure that they meet the needs of their clubs. We have also implemented a policy where if we can, if a district has not elected a governor-elect, we can help them with that process and select a governor and assign an Optimus International representative to work with them so that they will, the clubs in that district will have the full support rather than somebody who just takes a job for, because nobody else will. And one of the main things we've done to improve our leadership development and training from the ground-up club level is the Learning Management System, which is being offered now. And each club has four free accounts with that system for the president, secretary treasurer, president-elect, and club foundation representative to get the most specific standardized training and the latest information from Optimus International. We plan to use these technology tools to reach more directly out to clubs and make sure that they are receiving the best support from Optimus International possible, and we will be doing more of that in the future.
Great, Mark. Great answer. Thank you so much. I got a quick question from Yvette Berry, and Yvette Berry was asking, can Optimus International present the Club Jewes on an invoice that shows a payment tab on the same invoice? Well, Yvette, we already do that. What you can do is you can go when you're going on your invoice and you click on your club number. You choose your club, and on the right-hand side, it will give you how much your club owes. There's a button there that says payment, and you can use your credit cards. So thank for that suggestion. You can go online into Optimus Leaders and that facility is there. Any questions at all, please contact Optimus International Accounts Department and they'll walk you through it. Thanks again. Becky, coming right back at you. What about optimism is needed now more than ever? Dawn Arndwein, past international president, distinguished many is. The world needs more optimism than any time in living history. How can we now reclaim our philosophy to benefit others and enhance Optimus International? Cindy Carter also asks, how do we keep the optimism going strong in these unprecedented times? I'm gonna ask you to be a little brief here, so at you, Becky.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And that's a great question. Of course, Dawn Arndwein, one of those very wise people here, is that truly these are unprecedented times where people are looking for optimism now more than ever. And, you know, beyond the things I talked about earlier in terms of optimism and terms of what we do, this is more about kind of that philosophy. And I just want to highlight, there were many examples that arose during the past several months that show that clear need and that interest in optimism and good news. Things like Steve Hartman's Kindness 101 that went around and optimism was a topic, John Krasinski's Some Good News Network that he had. And if you missed it, Prime Minister Brian Pallister of Manitoba actually quoted the Optimist Creed in one of his news conferences on COVID-19, held it up, talked about how it got him through some difficult times, and he wanted to share it with his people, hoping it could help them as well. That was amazing. So tapping into digital capabilities and this interest in optimism, we now have an opportunity to really be a voice and to share positive news and optimism, not only with optimists, but with the world at large. And we're ramping up our focus on social media and digital presence, and this will also be a significant focus for President Mark in the coming year. So exciting times for optimists.
Thank you so much, Becky. Coming at you, Patzy, we're gonna talk about new club building. That's something very traditional in our organization, but it's not so traditional right now, as I am feeling the pain. So we had a question from Bob Jackson, dealing with, how can we look at new club building during these times? And I think Rose Medley from the Caribbean District, my home district, she also had a similar question as it related more to, I think, college clubs or something like that. But at you, give me your perspective on the new club building efforts that can be done.
Sure, I'll be happy to. And as you said, that this is a traditional way of building clubs. It's changed everything that we do with the COVID, is we're all kind of mandated to stay at home. But the availability, I think, of our technology and online marketing tools just makes it what I think is the perfect time to start reaching out to a new community or a cause or a focus-based club to establish a working group. Optimus International will even pay for the Facebook ad for a new club building activity targeted in a specific community to help you get that started. You know, keep in mind, if y'all are on Facebook, you've seen that numerous clubs have been started since mid-March, since all this broke out. Our recent new club building effort, as Becky said, in Nepal and some other companies, countries have been done without Optimus International staff or members in person. The efforts have been fueled by social media, sponsored by Optimus Clubs, and the organization of these have all been done by Zoom video meeting. So the time is perfect. We're currently expanding our virtual efforts to include LinkedIn, providing ways to integrate business networking directly into our new club building efforts. And the current new club building training module has been revamped to include virtual club building one-on-one. So these are excellent tools.
Thank you so much. We had some, are you still hearing me? I'm good. Right. We had some questions coming on the Federation, and we just had a full Federation Town Hall met door in the other conference room. And we had that in French and translated in English, so now we have it in English, translated in French. But I have questions from Vicky Means, Mike de Nicola, Laou Miriam, Gaetan Lebeli, Bernard LeBresque. And all of them were asking questions about an update on the Federation. Well, I'll give a very succinct response here. The Federation came about of a resolution that was passed in the floor in our- The Federation came about of a resolution that was passed in the floor in Ottawa. And it was from a number of Canadian clubs. And those clubs asked that the Board of Directors considered a resolution. President Rebecca convened a committee called RUSA with the support of Nick Perlemon and myself. And we were able to craft a charge letter to them that asked them to explore how this could be looked at. This committee reported back to the convention floor in Louisville that it was still a work in progress and we continue to explore new ways. I took the baton from Rebecca and we decided that at the board, that one of the better ways to consider this due to the potential financial impact on the entire organization, if we lost twenty percent of our members through a Federation model without preparing for it, um, financially, that it could be detrimental to the entire organization. So what we have done, we have worked with some of the proponents of the resolution. And we proposed, proposed to them that we would do a pilot program in the St. Lawrence region only. When the financial director Connie Pellock, uh, Teresa Obegoner and Benny Ellerby did an analysis, they found that this could have been, uh, more succinct, sustainable way of exploring the concept of a Federation. And basically, the Federation in summary would allow some level of autonomy in a cultural space. And in this basis, St. Lawrence region, which focuses on East Ontario and the Quebec area. We've put together a administrative team led by J.C. Sonange, past president of Optimus International and past international board of director Claire La Bresch. And they have been working on a proposal to come back to the board. We have one set of resolutions before us currently that will be discussed in the next two weeks at our next board meeting, um, where they are exploring through a series of committees they have set up, what is the most ideal structure? I caution everyone not to panic. There will be no separation from Optimus International. It will more than likely be a licensing arrangement. You will still use the name. You will still have access to our programs, et cetera. What it does do, it creates its own leadership structure within the Federation structure. And we see it as a potential for international expansion. I have committed to host a Zoom tongue hall. And I'll add the chair of the committee, Bob Garner, as well as J.C. Sonange and Claire La Bresch to join me in the next two weeks to discuss with non-St. Lawrence region clubs in Canada, the impact of the Federation on non-St. Lawrence region clubs. So I will give that overall response at this point. And I invite you to listen out for the tongue hall meeting, which we set up by Dana Thomas, um, in the coming weeks so that we can plan to roll out more information to the non-St. Lawrence region clubs. The administrative committee has done a great job so far and I want to thank them for their efforts. Um, I'm going to move quickly on to Mark Wainsaw. And Mark, this virtual platform is proving to be a hit. Um, people seem to like it. They're engaged. They like the fact that we are still able, as of today, to bring sixteen hundred and seventy-eight members together. Uh, and they want to know, is it something for the future? Uh, so Mark, what are your thoughts on that? And that's coming from Bonnie Spindler, uh, Terry, Heidi Sternig. I think that will cover most of the people. And Gary, Gary Martin and Les Laurie, they were asking some of these questions. So over to you, Mark.
Thank you. And, and, and it's, you're right on topic there because, uh, what is, what we're finding out are these digital, digital tools allow us to reach our membership in new, exciting ways. And we will definitely continue the virtual convention in some form, uh, going forward. Uh, over the next couple of weeks, I know our team, uh, after they get a little short rest, will, we'll be looking at lessons learned from this, uh, convention. And we will plan way more in advance. I have to commend the team, first of all, for this year, what they did in six weeks. Remember, si, uh, in the middle of March, we thought we were going to be meeting in Chicago and we had to turn things around very quickly. And they did a fabulous job. Well, imagine what we could do, no, no pun intended, uh, if we had six months to plan a convention like this. So the next one will be even more spectacular and I certainly believe we will do it. Uh, whether it is at the same time as the Atlanta Convention, which we hold, hope to hold in person. Uh, uh, I, my vision is maybe we would do something at a separate time, maybe every six months, so we could have a virtual and then a, a live one. But we'll be discussing those kinds of things. The other thing virtual tools enable us to do is reach, uh, everybody in other ways. And we will def, I've assigned my leadership development committee, um, the task of looking at virtual tools and especially the new ones coming out. So those of us in technology field know that things are changing all the time. Zoom wasn't even here five years ago and here we are making huge use of it. So as new tools come out, Optimus International will be looking at all things that we can utilize to reach our membership in new, exciting ways. And I can assure you that my belief is virtual conventions will continue in the future.
Well, thank you so much, Mark. Um, we had had a question from past president Mark Schreiber. Uh, Mark had asked a question about what are the future leadership plans for Optimus International? I know he doesn't look it, but Benny Ellerby is actually, uh, up for retirement next year, September twenty-twenty-one, as young as he looks. Uh, and at the last board meeting of the, uh, Board of Directors, uh, decision was made that a search committee would be formed before the end of this year, which would explore the recruitment of a new director. While we prepare for the future leadership of the organization. We think that, uh, Benny has done a tremendous job with the organization and he continues to lend his support in many different ways and has pledged to lend that support. Um, so we are hoping that by the end of this year, uh, this fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, that we will have a committee in place that will be able to work with Benny alongside Benny that will look at the future leadership of this organization. But I must assure you, just because Benny is our fearless leader, it does not mean that his other senior leadership team, they're incapable. Our organization will continue to grow from strength to strength and the board is still there providing oversight. So Mark, I hope that answers your question and I'm going to move to Becky to give her a difficult question in these times. Uh, Becky, we have been experiencing over the last couple of weeks or probably the last month and a half, um, significant social unrest in our wider communities, especially as it relates to Black Lives Matter. Um, today is the celebration of Stonewall with the Pride Month, the LGBTQ community. Our membership is very diverse and we have set the train, the trend by having not just one, but two female presidents and two black presidents. And not just two black presidents, two from outside of North America, the traditional base, two from the Caribbean. What are your thoughts on diversity and inclusion? And these questions are coming from Kevin Bush, um, Pam Barkhold and a number of other people. But I think everyone is interested in these answers.
Yeah, thank you for that. This is such a very important and very timely topic, as you said, with the racial tensions that we're experiencing in many of our communities across the country and around the world. And with concerns around inequity across, you know, many of our diverse communities. So, you know, as you pointed out, optimists have long been leaders really in this space with diversity and inclusion. But we also recognize there is more that we can and must do. So just to share a, a few things that we have done, for those who may not know, earlier this month, our Board of Directors actually issued a statement from Optimus International around diversity and racism. And basically cleared, clarified that, you know, we are united by our core mission. But, uh, and we value diversity and we will not tolerate racism and discrimination. And we've issued that out on all of our social media platforms and also on our website. And also there was a, a very compelling message from President Adrian personally on this topic. Um, you know, it's really our intent, frankly, to be part of the solution in our communities. And as we heard from President Adrian in his comments yesterday, you know, this is an opportunity for us as optimists to be part of the conversation, to be positive role models and to build relationships. You know, I'd share a personal example because some people seem to be seeing, for example, that a focus on Black Lives Matter and young people of color and so on, and our focus on respect for law is somehow at odds. And, you know, frankly, we don't see it that way. Those things can come together. And, you know, we just had a West Des Moines City Councilwoman, who's our first, um, African-American person in that, um, position, who also is someone who was an optimist, uh, many years ago, spoke to our club. She talked about this. She's actually the liaison from our city council to law enforcement. She wants to do a youth justice march that brings together young people of color with law enforcement together to build relationships and invited us to be part of that. And I think we will. So, you know, I, I encourage optimists everywhere to be thinking about it that way. Couple other quick things. President Adrian mentioned Pride Month. Um, he just issued a, a personal message regarding that as well. Um, and we have optimist clubs around many diverse communities. We have many optimist clubs for, uh, adults with special needs or what some of our clubs call adults with exceptionalities. And they are from California to Ontario to Indiana and more. We have indigenous and native First Nation clubs. Uh, we have rainbow optimist clubs around the LGBTQ community. You know, our commitment is to understand and to work together to address the needs of these communities and to embrace all the optimists. And I know that President Desertic Mark and our Board of Directors are committed to engaging optimists in how to inform us and to build those solutions and to create leadership opportunities as well. So, yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Patsy, uh, we've had a number of questions, uh, including in the chat as well privately to me. Dealing with declining membership, they want to know how are we going to attract younger membership? And how are we going to deal with the fact that a lot of millennial members are not interested in Jews-paying organizations, but they're interested in service? What are your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. Those are, uh, tricky questions to ask. Uh, quite frankly, I appreciate these, uh, these coming to us. Want to address a couple of facts first before I go into some of the ideas. Um, and Optimus International currently has sixty-four thousand optimist adult members in twenty-two hundred and fifty clubs. And in addition, there are seventeen thousand junior optimist members in just over six hundred clubs. And in recent years, our membership numbers have been declining at approximately three percent per year. And even though this is kind of a standard across the majority of service organizations, our board feels that we can do better. Over the past three years, the Board of Directors, Directors has been working to consider new ways of functioning as an international organization with less and different sources of revenue. We have a constant eye on the declining membership, but the board fully recognizes that our goal, of course, is to increase our membership and believes the most important number that we should focus on is the one that we currently have because our growth begins now. Even our keynote speaker yesterday, Jermaine, uh, Harris, mentioned it in his message. He said, this is the future and it's now. And as long as there's any need in any community and people that care, I think there will be optimism. We know that our lives are different, our clubs are different, and so is Optimus International. Changes in our international structure, they have to, they have to occur to allow us better to service our clubs and our membership. The reality of this all is the most important fact. The majority of our membership does not feel that they're receiving the full value of district dues and the board felt that this must be addressed. President Adrian developed a dedicated ad hoc risk meeting to look at this policy, ID twenty-five. And this work will continue with the hopes that these ideas will create a structure that addresses every member in our organization that will allow us to reduce our dues and be more marketable to any potential member as well as retain our current strength. But our goal is to welcome our younger members who will carry on our club's legacy in our community. And I think that is the million-dollar question. How do we reach our Gen Xers, our Gen Zs, our millennials? Um, and looking at this virtual convention, uh, there are a huge number that fit in that category and they could probably answer this question better than I at this moment. Um, people in their thirties today grew up building relationships on ru, online. They didn't ride bicycles together. They've grown up more comfortable with meeting online than in person and they kind of prefer that. Our virtual meetings and projects may be attractive to a generation that played esports, um, online videos such as Fortnite, I guess, in straight, more important than cable. Things like virtual happy hours are attractive, scavenger hunts, educational and motivational, motivational speakers like Jermaine. Uh, they will probably attract new people to take a look at your club.
So in summary, Patsy, what we're looking at is more still direct intervention with our membership, having more external speakers and social media attraction, looking at those programs. We're running a little short on time, so.
Okay.
I'm going to have to, to wrap that a little bit. One final comment I will make before we wrap. And, uh, if there are pressing matters such as these, the board is committed to engaging with our memberships as best as we can. So one of the key things that has been coming out, and I'm not sure we have done as good a job, um, in terms of our communication. The board, through a RUSA program, the, uh, review of our organizational structure and our administration, looks at our long-term plan. And that was chaired by a distinguished group of optimists across our geographies, the Caribbean, Canada, North America, La, um, Canada and the USA. It was chaired by Bob Garner. And the board took the information from their fourteen points that came back. And I had questions from John Grover and Pam Book, Pam Barkhold, asking about our three-to-five-year plan. And a lot of the work that you've been seeing coming out over the last couple of years, uh, from last year to this year, when RUSA was first convened, takes this into account. So it looks at our financial structure. Ninety-eight percent of our Jews are, of our Jews fund our finances. Ninety-eight percent of our finances come from Jews, sorry. So we put a committee in place to look at our long-term financial viability. So what we are looking at is, um, how do we get non-Jews income? You're going to hear me speak about some other opportunities this evening in the closing session there. We looked at our programs and we looked at how our programs could be more relevant. We looked at our training and our leadership development. We implemented the learning management system. We looked at our reason for existence, our sense of purpose. You see us speaking now on causes that are affecting wide communities and societies. These are things that we are doing and is part of a three-to-five-year plan that we have put in place. And I'm sorry, uh, John and, uh, Pam, if, if that has not been properly communicated to you. And we'll be more than willing to reach out to you privately to share some more thoughts on that. We are running a little bit short in time at this point in time for the business session. So I am going to just add for a quick, one sentence closing remark from each of the four presidents on behalf of the board of something pressing that they would like to leave with our membership. Uh, Mark Wainsaw.
I would just like to say, I saw a lot of things going by in chat, but because I've been focusing on our discussion, I have not been able to read that. So if there was anything one, anybody wanted to communicate to me or a conversation you'd like to have, please have it offline because this chat will disappear when we close the session. So I would be interested to hear from you and I have not read most of the message of the messages that went through the chat.
Thank you. Uh, great. Uh, Patsy?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll mirror exactly what Mark said. I had, I had a final comment that I just wanted to point out and it did have to do with growth. And someone brought this to my attention yesterday, said, we just kind of need to remember that any member that we bring in our organization, whether it be our club, whether it be defined non-geographical or just whether it, it, however we bring this new memory in, they are our new future, not our, not who we were, but our new future. You know, we have a movement out there and it's very, very strong and it's seen through our optimist, optimist mission. Every age, I don't care who you are or where, you know, fifteen to, to ninety is interested in belonging to a part of optimism, hope, positivity and happiness. Let's go sell that.
Thank you, Patsy. Rebecca?
So I just want to say thank you to everybody for your input. I hope that it is very clear to everyone that you have a group of elected leaders here who are all optimist members who have deep passion for this organization and we are, you know, very approachable, really want to hear from you. And this has been a fabulous opportunity for us to all engage. Uh, and, and I hope that it becomes an open door so that you feel that kind of, you know, ability to provide input and we can stay connected going forward so that together we can all shape the most positive future possible for this organization, for the communities and clubs that we're part of and the kids that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Rebecca. Our fearless leader Benny Ellerby, uh, Benny, any closing remarks before we go into business? I, I'm going to speak later, so I'll speak later then.
I, I just want to note that we had three hundred and sixty-eight participants, so that's, makes this the largest town hall ever. So congrats, great job.
Thank you so much. All right. Well, everyone, thank you for joining us. Please, uh, remember when you're attending this meeting and you go back, you may have to re-log in if you didn't open in a separate tab in your Google Chrome. You may have to re-log into your convention platform, Sits Connect. We're sorry about that, but this was the best forum to allow us to, to receive the questions in this manner. Thank you all for joining us in this tongue hall. Um, over three hundred participants. We commit to further that out with our members outside of convention. Thank you and have a great evening. We commit to further that out with our members outside of convention. Thank you and have a great evening.